Call to order the April 23 regular business meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp, lead us in the pledge, please.
Yes, sir, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind those in attendance, we have sheets in the back if you want to sign up for public hearings or for citizens' comment. Item two is the consideration of the consent agenda. Is there motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Submit.
Please.
Submit.
Thank you, Mrs. Ham, this is our second.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor of adopting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five vote. Do we have any matters from City Council tonight? We'll move on to item four, which is to conduct a public hearing on the proposed annual operating budget for fiscal year 2019. Mr. Hamp.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of council this evening will conduct a series of public hearings, and in most cases, for the final four items, you'll be asked to consider introducing an ordinance following the public hearing. And the first two items on the agenda will have public hearings and council is not asked to take action this evening. Will take action on the May 14 meeting. Our first item, item number four, is a public hearing on the operating budget, also known as the annual appropriation ordinance. And just for clarity's sake and for the benefit of residents who are attending and may plan to speak, the budget that was placed in the advertisement for the public hearing actually reflects the city manager's recommended budget. In the work that we've done together and the instruction that the City Council has furnished staff and general guidance, it seems that the conversation focuses on a real property tax rate increase of three cents, which if adopted would set the rate at 90. So while the ordinance reflects the original recommended appropriation, also included in your packet is an add/delete list that has been prepared by the staff that balances the general fund at 90 cents per 100 real estate tax rate. I'll take a moment to highlight some of the changes, additions, mostly deletions, that have been developed to balance the budget at what I anticipate will be an adopted tax rate. So, part of the balancing act, if you will, is to purchase about $20,000 worth of Kama hardware from a reserve. You see some reductions of transfer due to the elimination of the financial manager position that impacts not just the general fund, but the water sewer and stormwater funds, pardon me, I think just the water sewer and refuse funds. And then more significantly, and probably more easily to your recollection, staff has eliminated the recommended full-time classified positions, all except the sworn police officer position. So we've eliminated the office administrator position or office manager position that was to be shared by the Department of Emergencies and Management and IT, and that impacts both salary and wage line and the benefit line in two departments. We've eliminated funding, wages, and benefits for requested and recommended second animal control officer position. We've eliminated funding for 25% of three additional firefighter positions. Those are suppression positions, and you'll recall the plan was to apply for and rely on a safer grant for 25%, or excuse me, for 75% of those related expenses in year one, and then declining over a period of three to five years. You'll recall that the staff recommended a parks maintenance technician position. That is eliminated. We've reduced by $50,000 funding for non-VDOT paving. This is paving and maintenance expense programmed for streets and alleys in the community that do not qualify for VDOT's urban maintenance funding, and so maintenance and paving of those byways and alleys is exclusively a local financial responsibility. There's a significant reduction to the city manager's contingency account, which is simply taking that amount back to the amount that is programmed for this year. As we work through a budget, we will sometimes, if you'll allow the expression, park money in an account until we see how things are finally reconciled. And so that, while a significant number of $21,000, does not significantly impact programming in the general fund. You'll see then a series of departmental reductions that we've worked through with several departments. There's a $50,000 expense associated with some engineering design and some gas collection facility adjustments that we were going to undertake anticipating the establishment of Sunset Park. The staff's thinking at this point is simply to roll those design and work expenses into the ultimate funding strategy for the park, which will likely be borrowing, but could be cash or some combination thereof. At any rate, with respect to the next year's operating budget, we pulled those expenses out and will account for them when we undertake the full park. We've reduced by $125,000 the supplemental appropriation, if you will, originally programmed at $500,000 for the Waynesboro Public Schools to address compensation for teachers and administrators. The thinking there is that the municipal raise or merit opportunity was programmed to begin at October. The original budget from the superintendent and the school board anticipated increases beginning in their organization in July or August, and this seems like an equitable approach to supporting compensation increases for both public educators, or excuse me, public Waynesboro Public School employees and Waynesboro Municipal employees. We eliminate, as previously mentioned, the financial management position in the Department of Public Works. It's interesting to note that ultimately, the impact to the general fund is relatively Made some additional adjustments to the Police Department's value-added program. That program remains intact and remains healthy, and an important element of attracting and retaining qualified police officers to our organization. Couple of restorations, $6,000 restored for the Waynesboro Heritage Foundation. You'll recall perhaps that it was my recommendation that we reduce funding to that organization and put them sort of on a step-down program, and in retrospect, perhaps we'll communicate first and reduce later. Also included, $6,000 for some building improvements at the Waynesboro Public Library to consolidate a cataloging operation that is presently disparately located, excuse me, within the building, and that will achieve some efficiencies and some improved accuracies in work. We've added $25,000 to fund a human services grant program. Presently, we've parked that money in the manager's contingency, but we'll hold it until we're able to assign that more appropriately to the more appropriate account. And then you'll see some modest adjustments to various line items, mostly in the parks and recreation. Looking there to see if there's anything that warrants special mention, and I don't see anything. So again, this add/delete list balances the general fund with the benefit of a three-cent increase to the real property tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Mr. Hamp, before we open the public hearing? If not, I'll hereby open the public hearing.
Ms. Kathy Manaval.
Ms. Manaval, if you'll give us your name and your address, please, and I'll remind you with our timer up here, when the light's green, you can talk; when it's yellow, start to wind it up, and when it turns red, if you're still talking, please stop.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kathy Manaval. I live at 145 Honey Place, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the Waynesboro School Board. Back when I joined the school board in 2006, 2007, our budgets were fairly well-funded by the state, and so the question wasn't whether we would give a raise, but how much of a raise we would give. Then the recession hit, and funding just became harder to find. Since about 2013, the burden has really shifted to localities to provide the additional money to support pay raises in school divisions. In 2013, we were still competitive with Augusta County and Stanton. But since that time, Stanton has given 15% raises over five years. Augusta County's given 13.9%, and Waynesboro has given 7.7%. We are now behind, and so we are asking that you reconsider the amount of the additional appropriation, if possible, to the $500,000 so that we can give a 2% pay raise. Augusta County is giving a 2% pay raise. That would keep us at least not falling behind from them. Stanton is giving a 3%. It is a teacher's market. There's a teacher shortage in the state, and teachers pretty much have a choice about where they go. And in order to keep and retain and attract teachers, we really need to remain, become more competitive with our salaries. I have two charts to share with you that I'll bring up here that show you how the salary increases have happened in Augusta County, Stanton, and Waynesboro over the past five years. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Robert Horowitz.
If you'll give us your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Robert Horowitz, 1216 Frederick Street, Waynesboro, Virginia. I am the Secretary of the Electoral Board of Waynesboro, and it is disappointing that I'm standing up here talking to you again. We just went through a situation which was disturbing, and I understand the process that was gone through, but once again, we are an orphan. The Electoral Board nor the registrar was communicated with. We made a proposal in our 2019 budget to meet certain needs that we had in order to function properly. Nationwide, the integrity of our elections is under great scrutiny. It is imperative that the City of Waynesboro work with the registrar and the Electoral Board to do our part in preventing even the perception that our election process is at risk. We would not make a frivolous budget request. Perhaps we should. Perhaps we should plan on negotiating, but we have been and will be certain, any request or expenditure is to maintain the integrity and purity of the voting process. We work diligently to meet all the security, training, hours of operation, et cetera, that are required by law. We also recognize that we must be staffed properly to meet those requirements. Our request for a full-time assistant registrar was based specifically on existing needs. However, this employee will also assist us in meeting future needs as recommendations by and to the Virginia Department of Elections and being voted on right now by our legislature. Just to give you an example, there are 14 propositions that have been put forward, voted on, and approved by the delegates and the Senate. They just don't match up, so they haven't become law yet. It is not a matter of when, if, excuse me, sorry, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, and that's just one of the policies. We are trying to prevent cyber attacks. We have special security needs. We have special training programs that must go on. And unfortunately, typical of our state and other states, the Commonwealth of Virginia mandates but does not pay, and that leaves it up to the local areas. Last year, the registrar met with the human resources and city manager to, quote, "vet" that position in preparation for preparing her budget. She also consulted with and got the approval from the Board of Elections once we had that Nobody called us. Nobody contacted us. I wonder if we exist. We have telephone numbers. We have an address right now, and no one communicated with us. In fact, we only found out. By the way, my notes are in other colors because I used all my ink to print out the budget. I wanted it to be...I read a lot and saw what other sections have, and I understand what's going on. We have a big city, and it has to be funded, but there are certain things that cannot be ignored. Significant department requests, which were eliminated from the city manager's budget, this is for the registrar, a new assistant registrar position was requested, and then it says, quote, "does not show in requests below." So no one talked with us, and no one explained to us why we couldn't have this change. Meanwhile, a law was just passed, SB 252, that the governor signed, which says that the Electoral Board has the right to request that employee be full-time if necessary for its function. Now, that law was passed on the 9th. We didn't get to see the budget until afterwards, but we had spoken to...
Thank you, sir, your time's up. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. We just want to speak with somebody. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ms. Rosemary Waggoner.
Ms. Waggoner, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
Sure. Rosemary Waggoner, 787 Briar Road, Waynesboro, which you probably haven't heard of that because that's in the county. I have been an employee of Waynesboro Public Schools. I'm finishing my 29th year this year, and I have been very proud and pleased to be an employee of my entire teaching career in Waynesboro. And I don't come to you necessarily pleading over something that happened in the last couple of years. I want to come and share with you my experience over that entire time. When I first started, when I first came to Waynesboro in 1989, a lot of people were knocking on the doors of Waynesboro because we had good salaries. We were very competitive. Waynesboro was the place to be. And as Ms. Manaval spoke about earlier, the recession hit, but we also have lost a lot of industry. A lot of our tax base has been leaving Waynesboro. We've seen a lot of things move out, and just this week, we see that Kroger is going to close one of his doors. And I'm really sad about what I'm seeing going on around me, because that doesn't just affect the city, that affects the schools and the children that we teach, and because the parents do not have near as good of jobs as they had back when we had all those industries here, because what we have now, the salaries aren't as good. And so that affects the whole life of that child, and they need more, and we need good people to be here to be for those children. But we can't, we're losing our most experienced people. I've lost some really dear friends in the last couple of years to Augusta County. It's made me really sad, and, but I can't, if that's what they feel like they need to do to meet the needs of themselves and their families, then that's what needs to happen. Over the last eight years, we've not really received a real raise. You know, 1% raise isn't really a cost, even a cost of living adjustment. So, I just, I know that you've put some money in to help with the raises, and I thank you for that. I want you to keep in mind, that is not a one-year thing that needs to happen. We need to continue to keep our eye on the needs of the schools, because as the city has lost some, lost things, like I said, the schools have too. And we need to regain that image of Waynesboro, that this is the place that we want to live. And I don't, it's not that I don't live in Waynesboro because I don't like the tax rate or anything, it's family situations, and, but I try to do as much shopping in Waynesboro as I can to help the economy in Waynesboro, and I encourage my colleagues to do that also. So, while I don't pay the property tax, I do try to support the funding for the city as much as I can, and I'm also very pleased to see that you are including funding for another police officer, because that, I have learned this past year, some areas in our city that some of our landlords aren't as near as concerned about what's going on in those areas that we all are, and we need that help from the Police Department to make sure our children are safe, not only when they're at school, but when they go home, so they can concentrate on school when they come back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, sir.
I'll hereby close the public hearing. No action is required this evening. We will consider introducing the ordinance on May the 14th. Item five is to conduct a public hearing on the proposed capital improvement project plan for fiscal year 2019 through 2023. Mr. Hamp?
Gentlemen and lady, this is the capital improvements plan. You'll conduct, you're asked to conduct a public hearing this evening, and the document will be included with the appropriation ordinance and the budget document in total. This is a list of projects, I think, that could best be described as a combination of projects that are necessary, especially in the areas of the enterprise funds and work that has been identified through evaluation and study aimed at improving both the water distribution, the water cleaning, and then the distribution or treatment, water treatment and distribution, as well as the collection system for the sewer enterprise and the treatment process there. We also have included various stormwater projects and projects in the general fund that reflect both areas of improvement that the council should be familiar with, including Greenway Phase III, Constitution Park Development, and then also aspirations such as the Croze Tunnel. Received some informal feedback and question about the increase in the Parks and Recreation subtotal area of the general fund project list or capital improvement project list. Four million dollars of that is included as a marker for what we estimate and work with VDOT and with our own staff, it would cost to establish an access trail from the corporate limits to the eastern, excuse me, the western portal of the Croze Tunnel. So that's not a project that I would say that we're working on in earnest or planning for, designing, but it certainly is an opportunity that we've all talked about and that many people in the community of which are aware, and so it goes on our list in the event that there's a funding or a grant opportunity that would require the city to have previously identified it in a plan. And so that's a good example of a project that makes its way to the plan but is not receiving, well, how should I say, serious and regular attention at this point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamp. All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on our capital improvement plan.
We have no one signed up to speak on the public hearing for the capital improvement projects.
We'll hereby close the public hearing. No action is required on this, this evening. Item six is to conduct a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance imposing taxes for calendar year 2018 on property and persons for the payment of interest on the city debt, for the support of the city government, for maintenance of the public schools, and for other expenses providing for the assessment of persons and property, for the collection of taxes, revenue, assessments, and imposing penalties with the failure to comply with the provisions thereof. Mr. Hamp?
As stated previously, through work on the, through the work session process, council communicates a focus on a three-cent increase to the real property tax rate, which would produce a 90-cent rate if adopted. As again previously stated, the add/delete list balances the general fund at 90 cents. A note for folks attending this evening, six-cent increase or a rate of 93 per 100 assessed value was advertised, but it seems that for practical purposes, we're focused on three-cent increase or 90 cents. Taking a step back and revisiting the appropriation ordinance, I think it's worth mentioning, given the expressed interest of the schools, that the climate, economic, financial, budgetary climate in which the funding formula was established has changed substantially in the last eight to 10 years. And while we plan, one of the big initiatives in the appropriation ordinance is to make a contribution to the Waynesboro High School Project Debt Service Fund, we would again, I'd note, exempt that contribution from the funding formula, and it probably makes sense, given the recent history of additional appropriation by the council to the schools, to make a mental note of ours, to ourselves, and eventually a written note on a calendar, that we really need to get together and revisit the structure of the funding formula. That I think a funding formula really does promote communication and manages expectation between the municipal organization and the schools, but I think the current configuration of the ordinance and the things that we have going on with respect to teacher compensation and capital improvement really beg the two bodies to come together and examine if there's not a better model on which to build the conversation and the budgets in the future. So that's just a note. So with that being said, this public hearing is on the real property tax rate. There are no other recommended tax increases save for the meals tax and the cigarette tax, each of which will get their own public hearing and subsequent items on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Hamp? Comments? All right, then we'll hereby open the public hearing.
Ms. Diana Williams.
Ms. Williams, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Diana Williams, and my address is 185 South Delphine Avenue. So I'm here to talk about the tax hike, and, you know, there's a sea change happening here in Waynesboro, and as a city, we're moving the conversation from we can't afford to do this to we can't afford not to do this. Despite the differences in how we're talking about these changes we need to make, we've been slow to enact these changes, and I think there are a few reasons why that I'd like to outline, based on a story that I read in Psychology Today called Eight Reasons Why It's So Hard to Really Change Your Behavior. And I'm going to go through this quickly, although I have copies of my full comments that I can provide to all of you. So one, we're motivated by negative emotions. Two, we get trapped by thinking fallacies. Three, we try to eat the entire elephant. Four, we neglect the toolbox. Five, we try to change too much. Six, we understand the process, we underestimate the process. Seven, we forget that failure is usually a given. And eight, we don't make a commitment. And eight, we don't make a commitment. I want to circle back to a few of them. The first one, we're motivated by negative emotions. Nobody likes a tax hike, and you're probably hearing a lot of negative things right now. But if we look at this as an investment in our community, which is what it really is, the one thing I want to draw from this, and this is a direct quote from the story, "As much as this sounds like a platitude, real change needs a positive platform to launch from." And we've already done this, you've already done this. You've recognized that a significant part of the city's future is a strong school division. We neglect the toolbox. We all know that the main tool we need is additional revenue. And in order to compete, we need to increase revenue. We don't make a commitment. And this is a quote from the story. Perhaps most important, what the best of behavior changes research tells us is that if we haven't made a commitment to accomplish whatever we want to accomplish, it won't happen. But we haven't done this. It talks about a commitment device, and that commitment device is a comprehensive plan. So I'm speaking tonight, not just as a member of Waynesboro School Board, but as a member of that comprehensive planning committee and as a resident of this city. During that process, during the planning process, when I was talking to other residents, I heard the same three things over and over and over again. They wanted to see support for education, for our students, our teachers, our staff, and our administrators. They wanted to see support for other city services, like more revenue for officers and outreach, and they wanted code enforcement. These are the things I heard more than anything. So of course, there are other things. But I think if it's not clear, I am still advocating for the six cent tax increase, and I'm encouraged by Mr. Hamp's comments. But I don't want to leave any doubt. So I want to leave these following points in mind for you. According to TaxVirginia.gov's local tax rate, the city of Stanton's tax rate for 2014 was 95 cents, and I believe they're up to 97 now. And I'm quoting this because, not just because they're a close, a nearby locality, but because in terms of their school division, they are comparable to Waynesboro. The starting salary for a teacher in Waynesboro is lagging more than $2,000 behind the starting salary for a teacher in Stanton. We are losing good teachers to Stanton and other localities. And if we do not move to change this now, we will get farther and farther behind. We expect and want our schools to provide the same or better quality of instruction and services as nearby localities. Yet we don't provide our schools with the same resources. We have to provide our school division with the right tools to achieve the outcomes we all desire. In order to compete, we need to increase revenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harry Coleman?
Mr. Coleman, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
Harry Coleman, 105 Tiffany Drive. I favor the six cent real estate tax rate increase. I'd prefer to support the seven cent increase, which our very capable city manager and staff recommended. But typical Waynesboro City Council thinking already reduced it. And now we're here that council is thinking about reducing the six cents to three cents. Waynesboro should have spent more to increase the quality of life and the infrastructure of Waynesboro for years. I thought I'd try to understand exactly how we compare on tax rates with the 38 other cities in Virginia. I searched the internet and found tables for every year from 1999 to 2014 that listed real estate tax rates for cities. I entered 16 years of data for 39 cities into a spreadsheet to start investigating. I colored in green each year when a city decreased its tax rate and red if it went up. I saw some interesting things. Thirty-eight of 39 cities had at least one tax increase and/or one tax reduction. Only Salem was asleep and didn't change their tax rate even once in 16 years. Our three decreases and two increases for Waynesboro taxes in the 16-year period are fewer changes than most of the cities. We can all be glad we didn't live in the city that had 10 increases in 16 years. But are we paying too much? The highest we ever got in tax rate versus 38 cities was 24th one year, 15 below us. We got down as low as 34th, only five below us. I'm convinced that our low tax rate benefits big property owners the most, and that by hurting our schools, police, fire department, and other services, it is hardest on our poorer citizens. The numbers show we're paying a lower rate than most Virginia citizens. In this time period, the average rate started at $1.04, went down to 93, and ended up at 101. So the 2014 average rate in the state was just 2.5 cents lower than 99. But Waynesboro got its highest mark in one category. Waynesboro's tax rate in 2014 was 17 cents below where we started. So even though we were only 31st in what our tax rate was, we were seventh in the ranking of what city had cut itself to the bone the most. Our new comprehensive plan states we need to concentrate on our schools, on upgrading our housing stock, and on working to improve parks and other things that make our city attractive. But conservatives on council think all we need to do is enlarge our industrial base. All we'll have to show that magic industry is a three cent lower tax funded by cutting teacher raises yet again. We were at $1.05 in '77 and 97 cents in '99. What would our new high school and new industry look like if past councils had been bold enough to hold on to a higher tax rate? The things we've not done in this city because of artificially low tax rates are a main reason that some nice, rich industry like De Pont in 1929 may never stop here again.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Perry Fridley?
Mayor Allen, I'm going to cut you a break and not speak.
Thank you, Mr. Fridley. Is that all?
Yes, sir.
I'll hereby close the public hearing. Further any questions or comments? Council was asked to introduce an ordinance this evening. Is there a motion to introduce an ordinance? Have a rate. What rate are you introducing, Mr. Murch?
Three cents.
Three cents. All right, three cents has been introduced tonight. Thank you, sir.
At the risk of seeming like a smart aleck, I think you want the rate to be 90 cents and not the three cent increase.
Well, I don't know. I'd like to, no, I wouldn't.
Okay.
Thank you. So we will introduce a 90 cent tax rate.
All right, thank you, sir.
Item seven is to conduct a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending Section 86-28A1 and A2 and 86-139A of the city code to increase the water and sewer utility service charge fees and rates. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, according to the city manager's budget recommendation, the proposed water rates, both fixed rates and consumption, would increase by 3.1%. Water consumption rates would increase from $5 to $5.13 per 1,000 gallons of use. And the fixed rate fee for a single-family home would increase from $8.40 per month to $8.66 per month. The proposed sewer rate, both fixed fees and consumption, would increase by 2.5%. Sewer consumption rates would increase from $8.49 to $8.70 per 1,000 gallons of use. The fixed fee for a single-family home would increase from $13.76 per month to $14.09 per month. We have estimated that the typical residential bill, which is 10,000 gallons bimonthly, would increase $4.89 per, bimonthly bill, or $29.34 per year. The rate increases are based on the results of the 2017 Water and Sewer Rate Study commissioned by the council. The purpose of the study was to evaluate the city's water and sewer enterprise rate structure, revenue generation, in order to maintain adequate customer service, durable regulatory compliance, and the financial stability of the enterprise funds while ensuring fair and competitive rates. The rate study recommended rates for five-year period, and this is the second year of the period. Next year, rates would be proposed to increase by 1.1% in the water, in both water and sewer funds. And thereafter, in the remaining two years, water rates would not increase through the final years of the study period, and the sewer rates would increase by 1.5%. Mayor Allen had requested during a budget work session that we provide information regarding rates in neighboring jurisdiction. The city's rates, if increased, would be less than the Augusta County Service Authority's on usage and somewhat higher on the fixed fees. At present, the Augusta County Service Authority charges $5.37 per 1,000 gallons of water used. And the city chart would, under the proposed ordinance, charge $5.13. The sewer authority charges $9.08 for 1,000 gallons of sewage. And the city's proposed rate would go to, would be less at $8.70. Conversely, the 5/8 inch meter, which is a typical residential meter, fixed fee for the city is proposed to go to $8.66 per month. The service authority is at $7.62. And for sewage, there's greater disparity. The city's proposed rate would go to $14.09 per month, and the service authority is at $8.67. However, the service authority also charges a $6 per bimonthly billing cycle Chesapeake Bay fee. We calculated the usage for the same residential unit that we, I was referring to earlier, 10,000 gallons per bimonthly bill, and concluded that the rate difference is about 72 cents. In other words, that bimonthly bill in Waynesboro's $183.80, and in Augusta County, it would be $183.80. The EPA has determined that if a household pays more than 5% of its monthly budget in water and sewer fees, that then, that water and sewer is considered unaffordable. And then they divide that into 2.5% for water and 2.5% for sewage. Currently, the city Waynesbrows, if you look at the population, the median household income, and the monthly water bill, the city is at about 8/10 of 1% of the median household income for water rate charges, and is at about 1.3% for sewer rates charges. So in both cases, well within the limits of affordability, according to at least the EPA standard. We've provided the full water rate schedule in the ordinance, and the ordinance is available for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Are there any questions, Mr. Shaw? I'll hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
I'll hereby close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments? Council was asked to introduce the ordinance this evening. Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Item eight is to conduct a public hearing and consider introducing ordinances amending Section 78-154 and 78-188 of the city code to increase the rates for meals and cigarette tax. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Allen and members of council, as previously indicated, the general fund balances on the reliance of a recommended 1% increase to the meals tax, moving it from 6% to 7%. That increase generates approximately $685,000 worth of revenue to the general fund. Additionally, my recommendation is that the council increase the tax on cigarettes from 20 cents per pack to 30 cents per pack. You've, you were requested to conduct separate and individual public hearings on these two items, beginning with the meals tax, and also introduce ordinances respectively, amending the code sections and accomplishing the recommended increases.
I'll hereby open the public hearing for amendments to Section 78-154, increasing the meals tax from 6% to 7%.
No one has signed up to speak.
I'll hereby close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from people in council? Is there a motion to introduce that ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Next is a public hearing on proposed amendments to Section 78-188 of the city code to increase the rate of cigarette tax from 20 cents to 30 cents. Mr. Hamp? Pretty self-explanatory. All right, I'll hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
I'll hereby close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item nine is to consider approving an application from the Wayne Theater Alliance for Road Closures and Authorization for the Sale and Consumption of Alcohol on the Public Property for an event scheduled on May the 18th at 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., Wayne Theater Grand Gala. Mr. Hamp?
Members of council, this should sound familiar to you. This event was previously scheduled for April, and due to inclement weather, it was rescheduled for May. Because of the street closure and authorizations related to alcohol, I think it's important that council reapprove the application.
Is there a motion to reapprove this request? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five o. Item 10 and 11 are to consider making appointments to the Regional Office on Youth and Parks and Rec Commission. Mr. Hamp?
Presented for your consideration this evening is Mr. Doug Davis for a position on the Regional Youth Commission. If appointed, he would fill the vacated seat previously held by Mr. Jeff Long and would serve a remaining period of an unexpired three-year term ending August 31, 2019. With respect to the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission, excuse me, you are asked to consider the interest of Ms. Vicky Ferrera. And if appointed, Ms. Ferrera would serve an unexpired term ending also August 31, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Doug Davis to the Regional Youth Commission and Ms. Vicky Ferrera to the Park and Recs Commission?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five o. Item 11 is Communications, Correspondence, and Calendar.
30-second timeout, please, sir.
Okay.
So I goofed this up a little bit in the game plan here. We have, if I may, two separate school appropriation ordinances. The first being an appropriation of Title I Part A federal grant funds in the amount of $19,000 to the school fund. And this would be for the purchase of technology hardware at Winona and William Perry. The second school appropriation ordinance is to appropriate Title II Part A federal grants in the amount of $5,800 to school funds for various salary and benefit expenses. And, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, that oversight is on me.
Now that we know that we're talking about the school part, is there a motion to introduce what Mr. Hamp just discussed? Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? This requires a roll call, I think?
No, we're, we're good. We're just introducing those.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We're good.
Carries five o. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, may I?
Now we want to go back to.
Communication and correspondence?
All right.
Thank you for your patience, sir. Just a couple of notes from an operating perspective. You've heard periodically that some of our challenges in attracting and retaining employees, I'd like to take the opportunity to mention through this broadcast that the city is now hiring crossing guards, utility workers, ref use, collection workers, and ref use equipment operators, driver routes. These are classified positions. And with the exception of the crossing guard position, these are full-time with benefits. May be helpful for citizens to know as well that our paving season is underway. A list of impacted roadways is available online. It may also be helpful for citizens to know the manner in which the staff identifies which roads are going to be paved is an objective system that relies on some fairly sophisticated technology. We actually drive the entire corporate limits. And through video and computer technology assessment, the condition of the roads is rated. And so we get a numerical score for the condition of the roads. And our staff then apply that score and road rating to the amount of funds that we have. apply that score and road rating to the amount of funds that we have budgeted available for paving, and that's how we decide. Now, it may be through beneficial coordination or coordination with other utilities that anticipate work, that a strict application of that list is not applied in all cases. But generally, by and large, that's how we decide which roads are going to be paved. Also, in a similar note, citizens can find out about where we are doing utility work on our webpage, and that's available at the Public Works section of our website. Missed an opportunity at our last meeting to acknowledge 911 telecommunicators. On the first week in April, at the same time that we were celebrating National Libraries and National Library Employee Week, I found out, too late to include on the meeting, the fact that that same week was identified as the National 911 Telecommunicator Week. And it's, we make a point each year to recognize the service of those individuals because they are obviously not conspicuous as their colleagues in the police, fire, and rescue divisions, but they are nonetheless an essential part of our community's public safety team. And they are oftentimes the glue or the coordination that helps the team function at its highest capacity, and also the calming and informative influence to callers who are reaching out for help at a desperate and emergent time. Also, and this will be the last item for this evening, it's springtime, and folks obviously are naturally taking pride in their property and trimming and clipping and pruning. A reminder that we have an ordinance and a policy, an ordinance and a policy regarding bulk collection, and to please contact and arrange for a pickup, that's part of our policy, before you place items out for collection. And that's an important contribution that we make to the beautification of our community. If you have something you wanted to add, Mr.?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hamp. Just, I know that Mr. Marks had asked a couple of meetings ago about progress on the Florence Avenue Bridge. We did release an advertisement for construction bids today, and the, the bids will run through the month of May. We would, we've scheduled a notice of award to a contractor on May 31, with a construction date to begin on June 25. The bridge replacement has a 145-day construction calendar, so the completion date would be November 16, 2018.
We had two divisions in Public Works that were recognized for exceptional work. We received an award related to the water treatment, wastewater treatment plant, and then also one of our stormwater capital improvement projects. Please consider this a teaser, we're going to bring those folks back for more formal and official recognition at May 14, but the news was just too good not to share.
That was exciting news. So when we spend that money, we know what we're getting for the.
You're getting good quality.
We are. Anything else to add?
Yes, sir.
We'll make a small plug for the Soapbox Derby. I think they'll be having their event on May the 5, which will be before we have another meeting, so just to put a plug in for them. Citizens' comment period.
No one signed up to speak, sir.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.
No closing.